Or the work session, August 26, 2019. Councilmember Laura Towns was not here with us tonight. So we'll go on to the general. I don't have to excuse her again. Do I have to have to excuse her again? No, thank you. Okay, so we have one item on the agenda tonight. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. So it's number one, staff will provide information regarding the housing trends for a single and multifamily housing. Christopher Baker will present and he will join, be joined by Katie Wilk and Planning Manager and Alex Lotinsky Planner 3. All right, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to have this discussion and collaboration with you that ultimately, we hope, result in some policy direction regarding single-family rentals. As you know, the development of Goodyear and the trends that we are experiencing are very important to, as we build the community together. And your input is vitally, vitally critical in helping us move forward in a very progressive as well as responsible manner. So we thank you for the opportunity for you to give us some input tonight. Alex and Katie and I are going to present information and statistics regarding multifamily trends in the city. And we are going to pause at various strategic transitions in order to answer any questions that you may have. And then, as I mentioned, at the end of the presentation, we'll also be asking you some, a very poignant policy question. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie.
Thank you. I just wanted to go over a couple concepts for housing, just to make sure we're all on the same page and talking about the same types of dwelling units. So the first thing we're going to be talking about tonight is conventional multifamily. So typically apartments, typically garden-style apartment communities are built in Goodyear. And then an example condominium on the other slide, other picture on this slide. They're typically around 12, 20 acres in size, typically include 200 to 400 dwellings. They can be rental or ownership. And that can change over its lifetime, a rental can condo-ize. And to partially answer the question from last week, for this type of dwelling unit, a condo would not require a rezoning typically. So then the other thing we're going to be talking about is single-family rental. These are typically 10 to 12 dwelling units per acre, and they're typically about 150 to 300 homes on 10 to 20 acres. They're very similar to conventional multifamily, that they often have a central amenity such as a pool, open space, clubhouse. However, they differ in that they're typically one-story. I do want to be clear, this is the common name for these type of communities, single-family rental. But we are specifically talking about these types of multifamily communities, not single-family detached homes that might be for rent. There are even some single-family communities that are being what called "built to rent", where they are built as single-family communities, but a company is renting them out as homes. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about where there's multiple units on one parcel of land. And as I said, they're typically one-story, and these type of units also have some type of small backyard to them. And that's often why they're attractive to renters who have pets. And then these might condo-ize too. Again, this is a new product, so we haven't seen this happen yet. But if they were to just split up the airspace in the home so that you would only own the interior of your house, you might be able to do that without zoning. But if they wanted to divide up so I would also own that back patio, that would be a subdivision, and so that would probably require some type of zoning process and full subdivision So again, just to summarize, they're built as a multifamily product. So from a land use perspective, it is multifamily. The single-family rentals are about 11 dwelling units per acre compared to the conventional multifamily we've been seeing at 20 dwelling units per acre. And one other thing to note about this product type is, we've heard from the developers of these product types that Phoenix is kind of ground zero. There have been a sprinkling of these in other areas, but they've, they are mostly being built in the Phoenix area. And they're mostly being built in the suburbs of Surprise, Mesa, Gilbert, and Goodyear. So it is likely, we're going to go through some data later in the presentation, that Goodyear has more of these than anyone else in the country.
So as usual, we'll take a look at the general plan, what general plan has to say as far as guidance with multifamily developments. So we do want to emphasize that multifamily residential is an important part of a healthy community. And one of the goals of the general plan is to provide a diverse stock of housing that meets the needs of all residents. So in order to do that, we want to provide options for current and future residents. We want to have a geographic, geographic distribution of multifamily housing. And the general plan also emphasizes higher density development near retail and entertainment, jobs, and transportation corridors. And that's in order to improve accessibility for residents, increase the number of households and residents, and encourages pedestrian traffic, which also improves economic vitality.
So I'm going to delve into some of the data trends we've been seeing. So this slide is all of the dwelling units. The blue is single-family dwellings, the red is multifamily dwellings, and those red numbers at the bottom are the percentage of multifamily. This is just a sampling of communities throughout the valley. And one of the big points I wanted to show here is that there's no right mix of single-family, multifamily. There's no, we're targeting to have this percentage of our dwellings be multifamily. There's many healthy communities that have a wide range of different housing product types, as you can see on the example here. You can guess Tempe has the largest percentage of multifamily in the valley. We can guess why, because of the university influence. One thing we do see that's a trend is that the more jobs the communities have, the more multifamily there typically is. So it's no surprise with all the jobs we've been attracting to Goodyear, that we've been seeing more multifamily development in Goodyear. So this is just a sampling of trends. Again, the blue is single fam. So a few years ago, we had about 2,500 multifamily dwellings, about 9% of our housing stock. Today, we have about 3,200 multifamily dwellings. It still represents about 9% of our housing stock though, because of the single-family growth. If we were to extrapolate and single-family growth continues on the current pace it has been, and all the multifamily projects that are in queue were to develop though, in a couple of years, we'd see about, multifamily's going to be making up about 18% of our housing stock. And we're going to jump to over 7,000 multifamily dwellings. And again, that's because we have a lot of multifamily in development right now, due to all the jobs we've been bringing to the city. So what I want to do now is delve into that multifamily piece. So what these numbers are, these are all multifamily units, but what we're doing is comparing conventional multifamily, so the apartment condo-type developments, with single-family residential. Sorry, single-family rental, thank you. So today, on the ground, available for rent, about 9% of our multifamily dwellings are the single-family rental product. We have about 300 dwelling, single-family rental dwellings in the city. We have some under construction, and if you add those to the totals, we're going to have about 19% of our multifamily homes are the single-family rental product. If you include those in development review, so they currently have a site plan or construction plans in, we're going to have over 2,000 of these dwellings, and they're going to represent 30% of our multifamily development. And then if you add in those projects we've had pre-application meetings with, it could be as much as 35% or over 2,800 single-family rental dwellings. And to put that into perspective, there's about 5,900 homes in Australia. So imagine if half the dwelling units in Australia were single-family rentals. That's how many are currently in process today, in the development process. Looking at the same data in a slightly different way, and I kind of like to look at this slide from the right to the left, so again, there's 300, there's over 300 units built today available for rent. There's 491 under construction, so we expect those to be available for rent in about a year. Then we have another over 800 of the single-family rentals that are in process, so they have site plan or construction plans in for review. So we expect those to be available for rent in the next year or two. And then there's another over 300 units that are currently in for zoning, and we've had pre-apps with over 800 units. So we expect over 1,300 single-family rental units to hit the market in the next one to two years. So we've been hearing that they're renting very well, but again, we're going to have a big influx of these units hitting in the next year or two, the Goodyear market. And again, as we have these pre-apps, we're hearing that Goodyear is a desirable place. We are a desirable community. They think they can get the rents that these pull here, and with all the jobs that we're bringing in there, they see a demand for additional multifamily units.
So if, Mayor, can we take, we'll pause just for a second and see if there's any questions about the data that we could answer or clear up?
Joe?
You know, it'd be interesting, I see your slide there, what's under construction and under pre-apps. It'd be interesting to see on jobs on overlay on top of that, to see how that's growing, because it's kind of hard when you're looking, asking for some feedback on what we should do with these single, with these multifamily, because I imagine they're looking at this to figure out if there's enough demand for it. And if you're doubling more than what those percentages of jobs that are coming in, maybe that's a pause for thought, maybe they can't keep pace. So if you can get that, I think that would also be helpful to show what our projected job base increases are, because you say there's a linkage between the two, right? Jobs and, and these rentals. So that'd be kind of curious to look at to see what is. But it's kind of hard sitting up here when you're asking for feedback on whether we got too much, not enough, or whatever the case may be. You see what's driving them, see what some of those relationships, unless it's coming up in some other slides that I haven't seen yet. Does that make sense?
No comment.
So what we wanted to do is clear up, I appreciate your point, Councilmember Pizzillo, thank you very much. We can certainly get that overlaid, working with our colleagues in ECTEV. At this point in time, what we would like to do is just transition and keep moving forward if we can, because we're going to kind of bring it together and then ask a question at the end.
All right, Laura has the question.
I just want to confirm, you said that the single-family rentals are relatively new product, and we are one of the test markets. Just want to make sure. And how old is the, the concept?
Thank you. The Avila product, project that was built in the Palm Valley area on Indian School Road was the second of its type, is my understanding. And that was built, I think, in 2015.
Okay.
And so Avila had built, I think, two or three of these communities throughout the valley around 2014, 2015. They've done very well, so over the last, I'd say, three years is really that there's been an explosion of these community types throughout the valley.
All right, thank you.
Joe?
So from the standard multifamily to this single-family rental, they're occupying land that we have already zoned for multifamily, right? So, and the dwelling unit per acre is less, so it's a smaller population, a different model. I'm trying to get to where the problem is necessarily, and as now a former renter for the last year, the single-family model would have been far more preferable for us downsizers, I guess is the way to say that. But one of the things that I think would be helpful for this entire conversation later on is, at the groundbreaking for the project at the corner of Virginia and Pebble Creek, the property owner during his remarks gave some incredible statistics about the, the person that they're targeting in that particular type of single-family, single-family rental, sorry, that I think really tells really what the market is all about. And I, if, if, if one of our council members, and I think there were a few that were not there, and I don't recall what the numbers were, but they were amazing. We've, I think we have to have that information to make a good policy decision, because that's really the, the trend of what's happening with the millennials, and I'm seeing that with my own kids, and, and the babe, the, the baby, baby boomers like myself that are downsizing, and then those that are baby, baby boomer, junior baby boomer. But to see what's happening with that might be helpful as we talk about what's going on as far as apartment, traditional apartment living versus the single-family model. That would be helpful, I think, in a yellow paper when you fill in the info from Councilmember Pizzillo, we'll go from there.
Brendan?
So let me make sure I got this right. So this chart here with the valley comparisons, is that, so that's based on all multifamily and single-family rental compared to residential stock, correct?
That is correct. And this data is from 2017, because that's the newest data that was available for valley-wide data.
Okay, and then with the trends that were going right now, I mean, a lot of it was a makeup compared to the other multifamily. If we were to be, I guess what percent do you think we'd get to at the end of this, end of that, end of that there? Oh, there, oh, 18%. Okay, good. Okay. And then do we know, on average, what the rent is compared to what the jobs that we're creating are, are, can the people that are, all these new jobs that are coming afford the house, the apartment that are multi-single-family rental products that we're hoping they'll want to purchase or be part of?
Thank you. We do not have the exact rents that they're going for in Goodyear. We do know that they obviously cost more because you have a lower dwelling units per acre, so they are going to charge more to reach their overall bottom line.
Yeah, I'm sure, I mean, supply and demand will, I'm sure, be part of it too. Thank you.
Molly?
So this is interesting, just today, when I was doing my physical therapy, I was talking to the therapist who said to me, "I'm in an apartment, and I'm going to move over to yah, yah, yah place." And I said, "Really? Why?" And he said, "Because I have a backyard. And in an apartment, I do not." And I said, "Well, how long have you lived where you are?" And he said, "Two years." And he said, "But I just feel that I get more for my money when I am in," well, it's the Avila Centura. And he said, "I just feel I'm getting more for my money by having a single-unit home with a backyard." So this is a young professional who has been doing what he's doing for probably six years. He's single, does not want to mow the grass, does not want to rent a house, but he loves this type of living. Kind of lock it up and go, so.
So, real quick, let's jump into the geographic distribution that we've mapped out for you. So on this first exhibit, there's three different colors, and this is, encompasses all of the types of multifamily that Katie was mentioning. So the black is built and occupied, or in the case of the new Avila at Van Buren in Australia, I think they're currently renting. The green is in the process, so everything beyond, or pre-app, in development review, or we've heard from the developer that they're looking into multifamily. And then red is those areas that we have left that are zoned for multifamily. The, so what's important to note here is that the single-family rentals could go into those red areas. And what we want to point out is that the red areas that are left on the map equates approximately 50 acres. So if we did conventional multifamily develop, development on those red areas, that would, at about approximately 18 dwelling units per acre, that equates to about 900 units. If those were to develop as single-family rentals at about 12 units per acre, which is what we usually see, it would develop at 600 units, so that's a loss of approximately 300 units of multifamily and 300 residents in Goodyear. This next map shows the, the geographic distribution of the comparison between single-family rentals and conventional multifamily. So most of the conventional multifamily is built and occupied, a lot of the blue areas you've seen recently for rezones. And what we've noticed, just as far as geographic distribution, we've seen a lot along Cotton Lane in the future 303 build-out, and a lot along Australia Parkway.
So now we get to the policy question for this evening, but before I get to that, why does the trend about single-family that we're experiencing with single-family rentals matter? Well, the council or Vice Mayor Stip's question about a potential reduction in the number of dwelling units that we have in the city, since as Katie and Alex pointed out, single-family rentals are less dense than conventional apartment projects. Single-family rentals are eight to 10, eight to 10, excuse me, 10 to 12 units per acre. Conventional apartment projects, 18 to 20 units an acre. So if we take all of the property where the single-family rentals have been constructed, and we, and we say that could have been apartments, we've actually lost approximately 3,000 dwelling units in the city, which is a pretty significant number. And that loss of dwelling units can, or may negatively impact the ability of the city, the city to attract retail and entertainment users, because we have that many less, that much less of a population base, both daytime and just overall. So that is a question that lead, this leading up to our question. There's also some long-term questions, as you heard Katie and Alex point out, and I think one of you had asked about how many, how much of this is being developed throughout the valley. Goodyear is on the forefront of this, and this is a very new product, and we do not have a clear understanding of the life cycle of how these products move forward through their after-construction, nor do we have an understanding of what the project owners may do as an exit strategy if the, if there's a glut on the market and suddenly they can't achieve the, the market rate rents that's needed. So those are two important questions. As Alex pointed out, another point that we'd like to illustrate is the fact that a lot of the single-family rental projects that we've been experiencing have been concentrated primarily along Cotton Lane, and then also on Australia Parkway. The final thing I'd point out for you is, because of the way that the model of this product works, meaning they're one-story with central amenities, shared parking, the layout of them, regardless of the developer, are all going to be very similar. They're going to look alike. They're going to feel very similar. So if we have a whole lot of these developed, there's not going to be a lot of diversity in terms of the layout or necessarily what, what they offer. So we just wanted to point that out as well. So that leads us to the question that we'd like to pose to you tonight. Because of the sheer amount of single-family rental that we have been having in pre-apps, and you've seen the PADs come through, so given the preceding conversation that we had tonight, the data that Katie presented, the trends that we're experiencing, and also some questions that we posed, we're wondering if now is the right time to address the pace of the single-family rentals in Goodyear. If council gives us policy direction and says, "No, stay the course," then staff will continue to proactively work with projects coming through the pipeline, and you will continue to see PADs come forward for zoning changes and zoning amendments. And we also expect that you would experience the same type of volume of those cases moving forward. If council would like to address the pace of this growth, then we would then, and so the answer is yes, then we would correspondingly, correspondingly discourage these projects during the pre-app process. We would eliminate the use of PADs as the, as the vehicle by which these would be considered by planning, commission, and council. And then we would, as a staff level, propose new single-family rental zoning districts that really focus on creating very high-quality standards. So that's kind of the question we'd like, you know, we saw a trend of these, there's a very high percentage of our multifamily development is single-family rentals, and we're wondering if there's too much, if that market niche is too hot for Goodyear, and we're wondering what council thinks.
Joe?
You know, I personally like the single-family rentals with one exception. I like to see them have the same standard as any housing development that are single-family, which means you have to have at least three type of, what do you call it, facades, or whatever you want to call them. And they have to be different instead of the same box in all the places. I don't know why we can't do that when you're talking about the single-family rentals, because we do that in neighborhoods. If they're single-family standalone, they cannot be the same design right next to each other, okay? And that's where I think would lighten some of these up, where you have them all looking like one similar box. But the fact that the, the one that's going on, what is it, Virginia, right there?
The one, the new one.
Yeah, the new one that's going up. I, I like the one that Council, Vice Mayor Stip was talking about. I like that concept. There're going to be a little bit of difference on the facades, they're single-family, and I believe there's a market out there. From, from my perspective, you know, having three-story buildings- From, from my perspective, you know, having three-story buildings that look the same, and there's, you know, I wouldn't say hundreds of them, but multiple, to me, that kind of detracts from the appearance of the city versus if you have the single-family units that are broken apart, don't look the same all the way through. And I understand the downside as far as trying to get count up, but sometimes the aesthetics, from my perspective, are a little better than the count, so that's my two cents.
Roof lines are different there, right?
Yeah.
There are some, the ones on Virginia.
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I was impressed when they gave us a tour on how those were going to look. So to me, that would be kind of the standard from my perspective.
Yeah, so that's the difference on those, and they're not flat-roofed. Next?
Bill?
So, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Pizzillo on this, that in this, on this slide, it's a yes or no. I would say no, but. No, but let's put in design standards in the design guidelines, because right now you're giving us a choose no or choose yes, and there's a middle of the road here, and I think, I, I think I'd really like to see that, you know, diversity of product within the, within the, the concept. And it was interesting, I didn't really, you went back to the, the slide that showed where all of these things are, and off of Litchfield Road on the right-hand side was a single-family rental colored little deal. And it didn't dawn on me, but that's Park Shadows. Park Shadows has been in this community as a single-family rental, I don't want to say since the beginning, but it, I mean, it was base housing, and then it turned into single-family rental. We know, we have experience in this community, what a single-family rental can do, and, and its longevity, I mean, for, I'm going to say, at least forty years, we've had those. So I, I think it's the, I think we're on the, the tip of the iceberg here as far as what, what's changing in the trends. And, and the idea that we've lost three thousand residents, I don't think the pace of building is a problem in our city. And I think being able to offer a huge diversity of products for people to come in at all stages of their life is really, really important. So I would hate to see us go away from that. So I'm more in favor of the no, but let's put, do something in the, in the design standard.
Laura?
When we were at the LEED conference, housing was a big, hot topic there, and I can say a lot of people in other towns and cities in Arizona would be desperate for this type of product, mainly because either the short-term rentals are devastating their, their market, or I even met a council member from Chandler who said, "I couldn't even afford to move into my city anymore." So it, you know, times are changing, and we want people to be able to come here and, and, and still be accessible. But I also am hearing from people that they want something between the, the multifamily rentals and a, and a single-family home in terms of condos. And we don't have a whole lot of product with condos, it seems. And where there are some, it seems that there's a lot of activity with them. And one of the projects that I've found to be one of the most exciting, I think it was the Del Rosa Project, so when I always think about Romans, the Romans Project, where they were very innovative in the, the pocket neighborhoods and, and really creating something that was unique and special, that had that commercial aspect in addition to centering the residents around the, the open space to foster relationships, and they put a lot of work into that, and that was definitely something. So I know that obtainable housing is going to be important as we move forward. I, I think that this is an opportunity for us to maybe be more creative. I would love to, like I said, love to see more condos and, and time to upgrade the quality of those types of things, so I think I would be in the, the no, but category.
Brandon?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify the create-new district standards that focus on quality, is, would that be what like Bill and Joe and people are talking about with diversity of housing stock in there? Is that what you're thinking district-wise?
So if, if we took Merrick, Councilman Hampton, if we took the yes approach, we may write regulations or create standards that would just, that could slow the pace. I think what we are hearing from several of the council members thus far is the no, but, which is revise, create some new standards, focus on the architectural aspect of it and the aesthetics, as Councilmember Pizzillo pointed out, but really don't necessarily change the model, so that maybe the, the structures that are built has multiple elevations, as Councilmember Pizzillo pointed out, and the, the color palette is more broad. But let's not have a minimum acres of like forty, as opposed to just letting somebody do ten or twelve, or fifteen or twenty acres. So we can push on the balloon a little bit, but what I hear thus far, council comments are, is really address the aesthetics of them, not so much the model that they're deploying, if, if that's, if I'm hearing everybody correct.
Yeah.
Can I jump in? I, I think, though, we would probably, we will need to regroup, but it probably would be easiest to implement by creating a new district standard, because eliminating PADs is always good administratively anyway, and can also help future applicants get through the process a lot quicker if they don't have to write a PED and they haven't already made district. And doing that through the zoning, creating a new zoning district rather than amending the design guidelines. So that would be the vehicle.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I, I do agree, I think there's a place in the market for that, and the landowners think that they can get people that are going to want to, want to live in these facilities, they've done their research, and that's why they invested their money and they want to do it. So I, I don't, I don't see an issue with them. I do, to everybody else's point, I think there needs to be some diversity of the stock. I know there's some, some of these that I really don't like, and then there's some that I think are, are good. So I think having the district standards would be better, so I don't, so I don't see the things that I, that I don't, all the same, exactly, looking the same, they're super close, and so, yeah. So there's a, I think there's some different, yeah, the yes, but. And then, I guess, to Councilman Laura's also comment as well about, I know this isn't this topic, but I know condos, they'd be great too. I think this may be a segue. I know the worst-case scenario, I think we talked about last meeting, is that if for some reason the market changed, these could turn into a rezone and a condo potentially one day. They used to have the option, as, as opposed to, but I guess apartment companies could as well, but this thing makes more sense that it could turn into a condo if the market changed for whatever reason.
Mayor, Councilman Hampton, yes, that, that is one vehicle by which there could be an exit strategy from, from rental is condo. As Katie pointed out earlier, another one could be subdivision, and because we haven't seen any of these transition from, since they're so new, transition from the current model to an ownership model, we're not exactly sure how that would play out, it's just some questions. But yes, there is a via, it can be, I'm sure it can be done, we just haven't seen that happen yet.
Yeah, and, and I'm not wishing that on, on the rental community, but I'm just saying if that's something that, as an option, but, yeah. All right, that's all I had, thank you.
Yes, Wally?
So Councilman Stipp, the wonders of the internet. The developer at the Village of Pebble Creek said, and I quote, "What we're doing here is developers is solving a problem. Maricopa County is the fastest-growing market in America, and because of this growth, by 2020, we could see rental deficit of twenty thousand to thirty thousand units. There really isn't enough supply." And he is targeting the millenniums and those who prefer the convenience of renting over owning. And in his development, he's going to have a pet salon, Wi-Fi community table, kitchens, eighty-inch screen TV. I mean, he's really getting with what people today want. So if we could get other developers interested in changing their product a little bit to attract, I think it would be very beneficial to the city, because everyone does not want the same style house, the same color house, the same everything. They like to be a little bit different, I think, sometimes, and we're just really excited. I can't wait till they build it to see what it looks like.
Um, I, I, so I look at the ones that are on Indian School, Avias, is it Avia? The way they're set up, and the way they look from the street, they're quite good. They had a little different in color. They have the wall there, they have a tree there. If I drive down, where am I, Australia? And I come to the one section there, it looks like housing in a city that needs to house people just to get them housed. I know that's cruel, and I, and I usually wouldn't say that to a developer, but it's the, the color, the space, the lack of, and they had the opportunity to make it better than it is, all right? And, okay, maybe you lose a house or two, but to me, after that was finished, I was disappointed. And so when I heard the one on Virginia of what they're doing, roof lines changed, a little bit of amenities, a little, you know, a windowsill or something that makes it a little more homey, that appealed to me. And I, I, but I understand the cost, I mean, it's all down to cost. You put a trim around a window, then you got so much cost on each one. I understand their dilemma, they're, they're trying to make it so that it's worthwhile on costing, and they want, they want people to fill it up. But I, I don't want us to look like big cities housing people. So you go through housing communities in New York, Detroit, you know, anywhere where they're going to house people, it's all the same color. Uh, minis are very little. I don't think we need to be there, even though I agree with you, I don't want to lose people, I want to make it affordable, but I also want it to last. I don't want to have to repurpose it, because it certainly doesn't fit in with the population, the income, the jobs, you name it. So I, I get a little disturbed when I see that they found a way to make it look like a stamp, you know? So I have a stamp, I'll just stamp it all the way across, and it'll all look the same. I want somebody to walk in there to know their home might be just a hair different than the next one. And I think it's time to tell the builder that they need to also be a little bit creative. We're developing a city with parks, we're doing all the amenities, we're building a city that's safe, we have a reputation of it being safe. We're building a city of good schools, we've worked very hard at that. So all the things that makes those people happy when they vote, you know, when they enter their home, we're doing all of that, we're putting the money into that, we're making sure that there's enough water. So the things we're doing is we're making, we're building a quality city. So I think that it's time to add just a little bit more to the building industry. So that's my feeling. Oh. I mean, I was in the business, so when I wanted a trim or something, you know, and I'd go to the developer and say, "I don't like that trim, that, that, you know, it's not a nice trim, it has a crack in it." Well, I under, you know, then he sat me down and said, "This is, these are the facts, lady, this is what it costs to do that." But then I also, when I knew that it was an additional feature that was attractive to people, that people wanted it, I would go in and beat the door down to tell them why we needed that, why we needed to make that better, a better home for the people. So, you know, there's, I, I want to be able to put that sign out, there's no place like home, all right? And I don't see that in some of the styles that we're, we're now introducing. It's just kind of like, we got to get it going, we got to build them, got to have enough. And I, I don't want us to get at that point, I want us to be caring, okay? Okay, any other comments?
So Mayor, if I may just close this conversation, so thank you all for giving us the opportunity to, for you to weigh in here. We wanted to have a gut check with you to make sure we're all working in the same direction, so thank you for that. So I have two kind of follow-ups. One is, we will provide via the manager memo this week, an overlay of job growth versus the residential, and the, the single-family and the multifamily housing proponent in order to answer Councilmember Pizzillo's question. And then lastly, what I hear the consensus on the council is the no, but. So continue to go ahead, and let's continue our current practice. However, we will work at a staff level to create a new district that really focuses on the aesthetics of the, of the individual projects and not attempts to address the pace of them.
Any other comment? Thank you very much, I really appreciate it, and thank you for making it comfortable to say what we think. We appreciate that a great deal. All right, I don't think council has any reports any to make to this, okay? Manager, no more summaries, okay? So the no further business, this meeting is adjourned.